Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Council meeting for September 3rd, 2019. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor LaConti, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Most of you know that since this morning about four o'clock, the town has been searching, police fire, all types of response we've got from all over the state for a young 14-year-old young lady. They're still looking. So just take this few minutes to reflect on this situation and say a prayer for the family and the safe return of this young girl. Thank you. Clerk, please call the room.
Counselor Inghman. Counselor Cala.
Present.
Counselor Christopher.
Yeah.
Counselor Boncory.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Farino.
Here.
Counselor LaConti.
Present.
Vice President LaTieri.
Here.
President Becke.
Present.
I want to entertain a motion to approve the August 13, 2009 Town Council meeting minutes as circulated.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Public comment. Yes.
Hi, thanks. I'm Betty Puppi, Assistant Board.
Betty.
And just really short, I just want to first say that I noticed that the huge weeds in town have been weed whacked along the sidewalks, and the sidewalks are looking fabulous. As a beautification member, I think it looks so good. And so, thank you, Steve. Yeah, but I would like to bring to attention, they were just out of control, the weeds, they were really floppy. Anyway, I would like to bring to your attention, we have like this beautiful high school and these beautiful new fields, and at the back of Veterans Road, we have those beautiful railings that the guys in DPW made, but there are so many weeds there, it's like so trashy looking. As a beautification member, I picked up the trash, I pulled up the weeds, but I think it's to a point now where something really needs to be done, you know, on a bigger level, a grander style than just like beautification people picking up. So I'm just wondering if that could be more of an attention spot for those who, you know, for a department or DPW. And I mean, when you look at the fields and you look at the high school, it's beautiful. And I think people voted to keep, to have all the beautiful things, and when you look at it, it's from the Veterans roadside, it's not beautiful. So, and I know that the Automotive Places Park there and probably Executive Apartments Park across the street, but you can ask them to move because it's town property and just weed whack. So, that's all.
Do we note it?
My comment.
Do we note it?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, babe.
Okay. Have a good night.
Yes.
Good work.
Hi, Meredith Julia Wallace, Precinct 2. I'm just following up on the last meeting, I was here on the 13th, I just wanted to publicly clarify some of the confusion that's arisen picking up on Veterans Road. The bike lane that we presented, the recommendations from the DPW committee, there's been a lot of confusion around the impact on parking, and I just want to clarify that one of the main reasons that that road was selected, both in several studies per to ours and ours and also the DPW committee, or the Public Works Committee recommendation, is because it's width, because it is wide enough to potentially strike a bike lane either in one direction or both without impacting parking. And that was exactly our intention, us speaking on behalf of the Transportation Advisor Committee for pointing forth our recommendation. And I feel badly that it's caused some hysteria, and I want to make sure people realize that it's not bikers taking over, no one can ever park on Veterans Road again, and also that the recommendation was simply for a feasibility study to see, well, what are our options? What do they look like and what would it cost? So very preliminary, and I'm sorry that there's been confusion, I just wanted to clarify that. And also, the second point, the gravel path that we have recommended from Veterans over to River Road is a multi-use, wouldn't just be a bike path, but really just to upgrade what's already there. So we have a safe connection for people to bike or walk between the two. And then the third thing, since I had, I realized in June when we made our presentation, I had promised to send you all the complete results of the community bike survey that we conducted. It got 200 responses between April 30th and May 30th, and the key findings were that 69% of respondents currently biking Winthrop, 44% of whom don't, said safety was their number reason for not doing so, 62% that they said that they would if they felt more safe, and 80% said they do support efforts to improve our streets and intersections for bike safety. Bike lanes are one way to do that, not the only way. So I don't want to get all of our eggs in the basket of bike lanes, you know, signage, traffic calming in general, making our streets safer is number one, but we have never explored doing a bike lane, so this is an opportunity to do that. So I hope that makes sense and calms people's fears and recognize that parking is important, especially during snow emergencies. So let's explore our options and not shut the door on it. And here's a copy for each of you, I printed out, which includes the comments, which are interesting and entertaining at the same time. So, thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Anyone else? Yes.
John Samley, Precinct 6. This is out of hysteria, this is out of the, listening to the last meeting where it was clearly stated that it ought to have a bike lane on Veterans Road, we would have to eliminate parking. So I'd like to read the letter that I sent to each of you, Nelson and Trance. At this last meeting, the Town Council voted to authorize the Town Manager to prepare a feasibility study for the implementation of a six-foot wide bike lane on Veterans Road. If this bike lane is implemented, no parking will be committed on Veterans Road. Currently, there are approximately 70 to 80 vehicles parked there each morning. The bike lane implementation would also eliminate snow emergency parking on Veterans Road. Two new apartment developments will increase the amount of vehicles in the area. Business owners in this area will also be adversely affected as their customers will have no place to park. If parking on Veterans Road is eliminated, the cars that are currently out that are parked there will end up parking on the streets connecting Shore Drive to Shirley Street, as well as on Shirley Street and Shore Drive. Parking is already limited in these areas, so the bike lane will result in increased parking congestion in the beach area. Also, many people parked their cars on Veterans Road on street cleaning days so it's not to hinder street cleaning. There's also an alternate proposal to make Veterans Road one-way. Since this thoroughfare is a major connection from Point Shirley to Revere Street, traffic will have to be reroaded to Washington and Pleasant Street, and fire engines will be delayed in responding to emergencies. If you think the traffic leaving town is bad now, think about how much worse it will be by placing a bike lane on Veterans Road. This will only make traffic problems worse. Also, I noted in tonight's agenda that part of this feasibility study is, includes the motion to include a bike lane in the one-way section of Revere Street, of Shirley Street, excuse me. I didn't hear that part of the motion when it was voiced at the last meeting, so I don't know.
It's not going to be discussed, that will be eliminated tonight, that portion of it.
Very good. And that's all I can say.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, Karen.
Hi, Karen Travis, Precinct 2. I was unable to attend the last council meeting, but I wanted to thank Councilor Tieri, Councilor Farino, Sean Driscoll, Rich Stefoni, and Bobby Demento, and also the custodian down at the Memorial Gymnasium for taking the time to tour that building so we could really see what it looks like. Now I see what it looks like, but I don't want you to forget it. Definitely parks and recs need a permanent home.
Agreed.
The other thing is I'm glad Steve is here because where we stand with the transfer station, $150,000 was allocated for the FY 2020 budget. I realize that the money is not readily available, but I think that maybe the councils just sat looking for another source. I don't know about anybody else in this town, but the grass cupings in my barrels in my yard are terrible. The odor is a little too, too much, and there isn't any place to put them, and it isn't like, I mean, certainly we could go up and dump them at night, but that's not the way to do it. The other thing, as for the marijuana ballot question, it's simply a yes, do you want a storefront in Winthrop, or you don't want a storefront in Winthrop to be selling marijuana? It doesn't need to be complicated and make difficult for the voter to understand. The pros certainly are the revenue, but against, is the revenue worth the increased traffic in town? We already have a traffic nightmare leaving in the morning via the heights and coming back into Winthrop through the heights of Shore Beach. People don't drive through Winthrop. They come to attend high school sports events, high school plays, hockey at Larson, they come to visit family and friends, offer the restaurants. We have 1.5 square miles, you don't need any more congestion. Please consider this when you're going to vote on the wording for the ballot question.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Don't be angry, please don't cry. Well, I just came from the Winthrop Foundation meeting, and they are very far from being ready anytime soon, especially to fund a playground this year. And I'm sure it's not pleasant to have an odor in the yard, it's not pleasant to have an odor down the point from Deer Island, but there's got to be 600 kids over at that ATC school every day. And this town has known since May of 2016 that that playground is a killer. And if there is any money whatsoever that's going to be spent anywhere, it should be on the safety of those children. Because guess what? There's 180 days of school, so a few days of weather, they're not going to be out there. And on weekends, there are children in those parks. There are memos out there that said equipment was fixed. It is not. There is a slide out there with a two-foot gash that I can fit my whole hand inside. It may be plugged off at the top with a piece of wood, but that doesn't mean the kids aren't going to climb halfway up and slide down it. You know, I mean, it's important. It's, I'm not saying that the compost is not important, but is that a safety issue to a few barrels in our yards and in our driveways to 600 or 700 kids that are playing on that equipment every day? Now, unless something is done immediately, because it is the very beginning of September, there's a very short window, that safety surface can't be formed once it's hit 40 degrees. So unless it's closed, ripped apart, and done absolutely right now, there is no way that I would allow my children on that. And the fact that there are not parents demanding that something is done is kind of shocking to me, because as a hazard one, that playground states a loss of life, a loss of a limb, or a permanent disability. That letter came out in May of 2016. When something happens to a child that does that, and the town has more than a $2 million, $3 million, $4 million, or $5 million lawsuit, where are we going to get that money when we need $150,000 or $175,000 to fix that playground? Really, where are we going to get that money? Because you know what? If my kid got hurt and lost their life, there wouldn't be a dime enough. Lost a limb, permanent disability, not a dime would console you. So I'm sorry, I know that's really important, and there's odors, and it's scary, and God forbid, there was a fire up at the compost, okay? But we have had some serious issues going on, and if there is money going places, it's got to go to the right places right now. It's got to go to safety factors, and what's going to be more safe?
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Hi, Sean. I'm Greg Recursing. I live on Madison Avenue, I actually own a property there, I've been there for 30 years now. And I wrote a letter actually to the council, I don't need to read it, but I just want you to know that I'm, my property is spot zoned as residential, and it's really a business property. And since you're redrawing the zoning map, I would like my property to be correctly included in that. It's made it difficult over the years for me to get financing to do any kind of improvement. The property is sort of in this limbo state because it's zoned as a single-family house, and it's this giant commercial building. So I just would like you to consider that when you're, you know, considering the new zoning.
Did you forward that email to the lady board?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yes. And it's also, I think the street is really, it's a business street, it's, the zoning should extend all the way through Horizon, reaches the property on the other side because they're really a business also.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes.
Julia Wallace, again, I want to just change gears, something that just came to mind is, just want to bring to your attention, about a year ago exactly, we celebrated a very exciting opportunity, the grand opening of the Belle Almarche Ecology Park. And what an amazing addition to our neighborhood. I live on Morton Street, instead of a boarded up, you know, chain link fence with dumping, it became this beautiful park where you could walk and actually see the marsh and access the marsh, and I planned to walk my daughter to school on that path. A year later, I'm seriously concerned about the maintenance of this park. I think there's been some emails, I've expressed assist Steve Cala, and he's been very responsive, but just wanted to raise it here publicly, that there's a real business opportunity to actually have some signage to engage people. I think almost a million dollars of state money was put into this park, and it's supposed to be interpretive, engaging, a way to learn about the ecology and, you know, cherish the marsh and not just seem like it's a flyover, a place to just hang out, water, if you will. That's kind of what's starting to happen. So I just worry that we're not investing ourselves the way that we intended to, and I hope that the council can, you may be, come take a walk, check it out, how much, you know, if it's going to get mowed into, instead of a meadow, into a lawn, just what's sort of happened. Maybe we could get some picnic tables, or have it be something that we as a neighborhood could use, or go back to what it was supposed to be, I believe, which is a meadow to support, you know, birds and butterflies and nesting animals, and it was beautiful, but it's sort of in-between being a lawn and a meadow and a haphazard. So it's just confusing, it could be so much better, it's a real gem for our community, and I hope that you all, maybe if you haven't been, take a walk, get some ideas, you know, how can we help DPW, have the resources that we need to maintain it properly in a way that supports the ecology that was intended to support. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda, Leanne Aruzioni is here from CASA for a presentation. This is Recovery Month, the month of September. Leanne?
Yes, hello, everybody.
How are you?
Hi, Leanne. Good to see everybody. Summer's over, school is back. Great news. Meredith, do you want to join us too?
Sure.
So CASA and the Public Health Department have kind of joined forces to address some stuff with Recovery Month this year, and I think that, kind of generally speaking, Meredith and I have spent a lot of time talking about kind of what our overall goal was and how we want it to be most impactful in the community, and how we wanted to really kind of highlight those that are in recovery, but also those that are still struggling to find their path, but then also highlight how kind of CASA fits into that as a primary prevention coalition, right? So our goal is getting ahead of issues before they become issues, right? To support people before the road of addiction begins. And so I think for a lot of people, that's really confusing, that CASA does primary stuff and then also supports what we call tertiary prevention, which is kind of preventing people from overdosing and kind of getting connected to resources. So Meredith and I thought that it would be a really smart idea to kind of start at the beginning, and instead of kind of hosting big events to kind of educate the community, we wanted to bring things back to the very beginning of just universal language, just understanding what addiction is and how it impacts us and how it impacts those around us, what are the signs to look for, and how important primary prevention is. You know, our goal as CASA is to not have to worry about recovery and prevention and tertiary prevention, because the problem won't exist, right? We're fixing it when kids are seven or five, and, or in, you know, elementary school or middle school, properly supporting them then, so that when these choices arise to kind of carry down this road that isn't going to lead to very many positive things, they take a left instead of a right, right? You know, that's kind of our goal. So Meredith and I have spent kind of a lot of time thinking about how we can begin those conversations and kind of curb people's perception about the, you know, the need for there to be a lot of support and young people to make, you know, more healthy decisions. And that is more than just sports or academics. And, you know, how can we do that? And how can we connect to parents to understand how we can all work together to help support young people? So kind of overall, we've decided to kind of take a step back and to work on kind of universal language. So we've done a few things, I don't know if you want to highlight any of them in particular.
Oh, going forward? What we're going to be doing? Yeah. So like Leanne said, you know, she's kind of more of the primary prevention, and, you know, we're known in the Public Health Department for the CLEAR program around opiates, and we're trying to make the connections that as much as opiates and heroin are still very much concerning in our community, alcohol is just as concerning, that's the number one substance that, you know, residents are addicted to, so we don't want to lose sight of that, so we're trying to generalize the language. So on April, I mean, not April, September 12th, we're having, we do drop-in every Thursday, so we're going to host anybody that wants to come and make some lanterns for anybody who's been lost to addiction, which will end up being displayed in the front windows of the Town Hall for the following week, is what we're doing. We've worked on some social media campaigns that are going to be, being posted every single, every single day throughout September with some interesting statistics that are a little bit more encompassing about how addiction develops and least prevented, you know, before it kind of becomes to a point where we need to have recovery and crisis intervention and things like that going on.
Another thing that we had decided to do was we thought that it was really important to humanize the individuals in this community that do this work, and to kind of give a face to a name, to a story about, you know, why we do what we do. So we have, the newspaper has been fantastic, and Kate will be doing a spotlight once a week. So every newspaper that comes out will highlight somebody in our community that has been identified as being kind of a leader in, whether it be recovery or whether it be, you know, with CASA and prevention. Our goal is for the community to see these faces and to hear their stories and to understand why they do what they do, and what they do, so that people have a personal connection to somebody that they might be able to turn to if they're having a hard time, or if they got a question, or they're just curious. And so kind of our goal is to really kind of humanize all of us, and that, you know, it's okay to struggle, and it's okay to, you know, be concerned about somebody or to have questions about somebody or something, and we want to make sure that people feel like that there are people in this community that they have, you know, they can go to and confidentially speak to about what they're, what was going on for them. So we're really excited to see what those articles will be. We don't know what, you know, what these individuals are going to say, so it's really exciting for us to be able to hear, you know, why they were identified amongst the community as being somebody that was a leader, you know, within our work. So make sure you guys get the paper every week, because they will, they'll all be in there every week. I also want to introduce Rhiannon, who's here as part of our Youth Advisory Board. Rhiannon is going to talk a little bit about some of the other, like, more youth-specific things that we have going on in September for Recovery Month.
Hi. My name's Rhiannon, and I am a junior at Winthrop High School. We started today, which was kind of exciting. So September is Recovery Month, which for CASA has always been a big part. I've been part of CASA since my eighth grade year, so this is my fourth year. And we always do, we always try to do something big for September, we always try to be super informative during this month. So we're working with the Town Health Department for the month of September to share different facts and information on social media and to the community to spread awareness about recovery and prevention, as Leanne and Meredith both said. So we're going to be all over social media, hopefully you've already seen us on Facebook. You've probably seen, I know Leanne posted her request for plastic bottles or cups. That is actually for the lanterns or the candle holders that we're making for our vigil. Our vigil is going to be the 16th to the 20th, where we're going to have small electronic tea candles put inside of plastic bottles or cups that we have cut and decorated with tissue paper to share the memory of somebody who has suffered from an overdose or from mental health problems. So September 12th, from 5 to 8, people can come to the front, come to the first floor of the EB Newton to make their own holders, which will be put in the windows of Town Hall. Also, September 21st is the Accret Winthrop Festival, where we will be having a stand, so there will be youth, just like me, there are about four of us who've already confirmed that we're going to be there, and we'll be giving informational activities, it will probably be candy of some sort, which are mainly geared towards youth, people my age, I think our youngest at the moment is 11, and our oldest is 19. So people who are around my age, just to get them started on knowing about what recovery and prevention both are, because alcohol and drug abuse are two of the most prevalent things in Winthrop, which is terrifying because seeing social media these days with kids in my school, kids from surrounding towns, it's terrifying because you can see what CASA talks about every single day and what we're trying to prevent. So September 28th is our basketball tournament, where it's $350 a team, and all of the proceeds go to CASA to help fund work that we're already doing or that we hope to start. I'm not sure how many teams we have signed up as of right now.
Four.
Four teams, so pretty good game. I wouldn't know, I don't do basketball. So that's a fun thing that we do, I do, I did do concessions there last year, so that's about what I know. Like Leanne said, our goal is to humanize a lot of the people who do the work that we do. So we have somebody from the Youth Advisory Board being interviewed with Kate, and she will be in the newspaper, hopefully, to show kids in the community and even their parents that CASA is not somewhere that the feds will get you, and we're actual people too. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah. Just to make a quick note about those candle vigil things, we have to make 100 of them, so come one, come all, because we have a lot to make, and that's a lot of blue. So if you're around, feel free to drop in and grab some tissue paper and a bottle, and we'll get to work.
It's some good news, actually, that just popped into my head too, that I want to share with you guys, is that we recently were contacted by the Suffolk County ADA's office, and they gave us $15,000 to support the CLEAR program, which was a blessing, and we're very happy about that. This is our fourth year, I believe, getting this little gift, so we never know if it's coming, it all depends on what their budget is at the end of the year, so that was a nice surprise last week.
Anybody have any questions about?
Any questions from the council?
I just, I just have one, and I probably will talk to you about it at length at another time, but trying to get the word out, trying to educate the children, like you were talking about, you know, we used to have a program that was the DIA program, and it was in the elementary grades, and it was, you know, when the kids, you know, they're young and they don't listen, and they learn how to say no to peer pressure, why they should say no. They interact with the police, they become friendly, they know them, they can go to them and say, you know, maybe talk to them and let them know if there's a problem or something, you know, try and give them a hard time, just that. I mean, is that, is there anything like that that might be worth, you know, trying it all over again? I mean, it, it spanned for about, I don't know, maybe about four years, four or five years, and then it kind of went off the grid. I don't know if the grant was lost or whatever, but isn't it kind of better to get them young?
Yeah, if you ask me.
Yeah.
But some people might not agree with that. But, you know, I think it's developmentally appropriate conversation, of course, can happen at any age. So I, I think it's, you know, kids have ears and eyes, and they are very much aware of everything that happens in this world, whether they see it on TV, they see it in their own house, they see it from, you know, social media, right? YouTube, every kid has YouTube. So, you know, it's a, to think that it's not something that kids are seeing, they might not have the right language to explain it, but they're seeing it and they're hearing it. So I think it would be great for us to find unique ways, and I know that we've had So I think it would be great for us to find unique ways and, and I know that we've had long conversations with Lisa Howard at the school about, you know, unique ways that we can kind of get, get, get some of these things. Curriculums are really expensive and they don't typically span an entire, you know, public school, right, of kindergarten through, through high school. So you kind of have to choose, you know, where your catchment area is gonna be. And so, you know, we're looking for kind of unique ways to kind of expand that kind of stuff. And we're working really closely with the Police Department. CASA is in particular on some funding that could help expand some of the collaborative work that is kind of, you know, more of that community policing stuff that they have going on. So for us to kind of engage young people more.
And I know at the middle school, they have a grant for the Botman Life Skills Class, which is more about, it's not drug, alcohol specific, but it's about making good choices and risky behaviors and things like that. At the high school, they have their health curriculum, but it's only one year, it's freshman year, it's half year. So I do, I a hundred percent agree, like as young as possible that we can get this information out to kids. Currently, as we're going through the, the Community Health Needs Assessment that we've been working on with the North Suffolk Public Health Collaborative with Revere and Chelsea, it's been identified that behavioral health and substance abuse is the number one priority in all three communities. So we're trying to pull together the superintendents of all three of those schools with the idea that we can pool, pool our needs and make us better equipped to apply for, you know, larger grants to, to fund initiatives in all three of our communities, which can be a frustrating process, but I think it's the only process right now that we're being presented with. But, you know, we've also, the, I know at the high school, they've done phenomenal PSAs through their digital video class with Brian Johnley. And, you know, we've talked about just showing that at the coming school and at the middle school because, you know, a lot of times these kids, they're, you know, their celebrities are the high school kids, you know? So if they see them at least sending a good message like, you know, I'm not doing this because I have to skate my hockey game or I'm not doing this because I won't be able to be in my drama, you know, production next weekend, I think that that message needs to be a little bit better connected.
Any other questions?
Just thank you guys very much for all you do.
Thank you for all you do. Appreciate it. Okay, and the correspondents, I'm not gonna read. We had a batch of correspondents come in pro and con regarding the bike lanes. I guess the best way to describe it is 70% were for it and 30% were against it. The next portion of the council meeting is a public hearing of the Town Council to transfer $25,000 from the Town Council Reserve. Water and sewer rate costs steady. Some months ago, we received a petition from residents regarding the water rates in the town of Winthrop. And at that particular point in time, we were requested to ask the state to conduct an audit of the water and sewer rates. We did receive a letter back from the state auditor and I'm just gonna paraphrase a portion of the letter. It says, although the enabling legislation authorizes us to conduct certain municipal government audits when requested by local officials, it also allows us to decide whether to accept the requested audit engagement. While I can appreciate the town of Winthrop's concern about the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, in my office's opinion, this issue does not rise to the level of something we would choose to audit. So basically, we're left to conduct an audit ourself and there was a cost involved of $25,000. So I'll open the hearing up at this particular important time to hear comments from the general audience. Anybody wish to be heard?
I guess I'm just not understanding, is this gonna be an audit or a, a study?
I'll refer to the Town Manager.
This is going to be a study.
So I think that that audit should be taken off, I know, I think it should be taken off the table.
Sure. So the, the request to the State Auditor's Office was under the context of audit. This proposal that we have is a study of not necessarily like the past decisions about the finances, more looking at the tier structure, if we're going to do single family homes versus multifamily homes in terms of rates, commercial versus residential, have it going through the exercise of looking at different ways to add up to the same number is essentially what this would do.
I guess I'm just not understanding. I mean, what difference does it make if it's a single or a two family? I own a two family, so my water bill naturally is gonna be more than Barbara's bill because she owns a single. So aren't we paying for usage? Aren't we paying for what shows on our data?
So there are different ways that that can be calculated. You can have tiered usage rates based off of, once you hit a certain amount of usage, you then get hit with an extra charge and things like that. These are things we just haven't explored here in the past. We have consistently had every type of property has the same rate. And this is based off the feedback that I received at the time. It seemed like there wanted to be an exploration of how we are charging for water, not necessarily blaming the decisions of the past, but looking at, is it an equitable rate? Are we charging people accordingly? Are people who are using significantly more than others being charged appropriately? Are we basically trying to get people to curb their usage effectively and things like that? So it's, this was based off of what the community was clamoring for, so that's.
But if you curb your usage, then isn't the rate gonna go up to meet the, to meet the, um?
No, it's a, it's a three-year calculation for it. So it's not something that you can curb your usage in one quarter and then see a savings on your bill. This is a three-year calculation.
No, what I'm saying is, is if the whole town starts to curb.
Yep.
When the rate go up to meet what MWR says is our.
But again, that calculation from MWR is based off of three years of usage. So it's not just a year-to-year, quarter-to-quarter type of thing. It's a calculation based off of three years of usage. So again, as we stated in some of the FAQs and things like that, it's not something that in the moment a reduced usage leads to a reduction in your total bill.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes.
I would like to ask if you are going to look for the water leaks, the wasted water, before you start to look on how are you going to change the rates on usage?
We are.
And how people are gonna use it?
From my DPW director, we are constantly looking for leaks.
We're, we're required by our permit to do a, a townwide weed detection survey every two years. I do two weed detection surveys per year. So we're very aggressive looking for leaks. We're removing supply valves at the meters to deter people from being able to easily bypass meters and steal water. So we are aggressively, you know, going after both unaccounted-for water theft, leaks. The rate is not strictly based on, or isn't comprised strictly of usage. You know, there's, it's an enterprise fund, so there's, there's debt services built into that. Essentially, the, the enterprise fund has to be self-sustained. So the rest of the budget is of that fund, it's reflected in, in the rate. So it's not just a, a usage thing. If we cut back on usage, you know, the bill's gonna go down. You still get debt services to pay. The rate has to cover the debt services and what it takes to operate the water and sewer grounds.
Okay, one more question. Are all the meters the same now throughout all the houses, all the homes everywhere? Or are we still?
We're, we're still in the process of, of installment meters. It was totally done, you know, in-house as a cash savings.
And how long will that be?
We're two-thirds through. So we have about another, just under 1,500 meters to go.
So that'll be another year?
That's my, that's, I'm striving for that.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, Don.
It's more of a question. The newly found monies are our re-allocated pilot fund that we Winthrop received every year. That's gone into the Winthrop Fund now, our special fund, right? They're meeting tonight.
There's two, there's two, there's two.
The foundation or whatever.
The foundation is separate from the pilot.
So the pilot monies is not affected. So the pilot monies indeed could turn around and offer a, say, $25 or $50 savings to every community, that a person in the community that pays the water bill. There is, there's money that could be allocated to, to relieve the citizen in the town until such time as a program has been identified and a program is studied and, and the pros and cons on the program, does it have that three-year, five-year window of long-term effectiveness that's gonna help the water payer?
Okay, so let's keep the, the comments to the actual hearing, whether or not you think we should conduct the rate study. That's the question in front of us. There's many different ways and, you know, lots of money that we could move around. That money is already put in the budget.
I'm also studying the studies.
Okay? Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes.
Barbara's Villas Precinct One. I was just out for a walk and I stopped in, but my water bill was $839 for this last quarter. I own a two-family home. We do have a swimming pool, but I often wondered why we don't go the route that Revere does. And I always thought it was on population. Is it still not on population for the usage?
It's based, it's, the assessment's based on, on usage.
But our population, at one time we got a, a refund because our population wasn't as high as since we already thought it was.
Part of the, the assessment for the water and sewer category is slightly differently and one of them, there are whatever components that go into it and I think population is part of, is one of the components to the multi-component assessment.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Just one question. Who would do, what kind of a person would do this? What you're talking about, this study? What, what would the, would the person be an engineer, a finance person or?
So this proposal that's on the table is from environmental partners. They have multiple engineers on staff. They have people that, they consult with many municipalities and DPW and water and sewer departments all over the state concerning best practices and things like that. And a fair amount of communities in the state do this type of exercise every three to five years, just to check if they're setting the rate correctly and if it's equitable as well.
So a lot of people that do this?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a, it's an engineering thing, a finance official within like water sewer things and things like that.
And the DPW director would be a logist.
Absolutely, yes. They would most likely be reporting directly to him.
And how long will this study take?
The Council of the Tyrus about that previously, it looks like it's around 90 days to do all of the calculations and give us some options.
How many days?
90 days, so about three months.
I thought you said nine.
No, I wish, that'd be, that'd be worth the money. So, no, it, it seems like it would be about a three-month project, just to get all of the interested parties in the same room to talk about the issues and then have them report back to us on what they're seeing and what they would, the different options that we could potentially pursue. And then again, it has to come in front of the council to have a discussion about if we're looking at a tiered system, what is the tiered system that we want to pursue and what would the potential impacts of that be from place to place? There are individual and individual.
This, this type of study, it's not that it's never been done. There has been studies done on the rate in the past. And from the information that I've kind of acquired in the years and from prior record for me, is the tiered system is difficult to work in a, in a community that has not a lot of commercial to offset. So there's, like Revere has the opportunity to offset their expenses, like in other words, they do a seasonal meter as well. And the, and the rate, the, the higher rate on, on the commercial properties are able to offset that sewer charge. The MWR is still billing you the sewer, but they're able to offset it through the commercial rate to higher tier. Winthrop is a little bit unique, which we're, we're mostly residential. So, you know, it'd be interesting to see what, you know, what the study reveals. We have, it's been looked at in the past and that's the information that I have acquired.
Any other public comment or comments?
Me, interesting.
Councilors, anybody wanna make?
The council doesn't set the water rate. The Town Manager said it as we learned at the last water rate. When the water rate was raised, we had people coming with a petition to have an audit. But it was audited by our independent auditor that the council has, Dick Kingston, and he audited the water rate. But we still attempted to get that audit done by the, the state auditor, who now has refused to do it. She said she was not coming to Winthrop to do that kind of a small audit. I think that's, doing a study is just a waste of $25,000 because no matter what it comes up with, I'm not in favor of a, of a tiered bill that a commercial business is gonna get a higher rate with the same usage that I have. I mean, if it's on usage, it should be on usage. That's why we have a single tiered tax rate and we don't charge the commercials more because there are so few of them, it really doesn't make a difference. And I think if we got $25,000 to spend, let's spend it on something that's more useful than a study.
Anyone else wish to be heard on the council? Yes.
I will, and we will bring this up, but we did discuss this in, obviously in the Finance Committee and I agree a hundred percent with Council Boncory. I think the people were up in arms, my opinion, was because the rate was so high, not because of how we came up with a million dollars, whatever the million dollars, whatever the number is, I don't think people were upset with how we came to that number. I think people were upset with the rate that we charged the, the residents. I think people were clamoring, there were a group of people that wanted to look into a tiered system, but I think for the most part, people are clamoring to do an audit to see if we really needed the rates as high as they were. But I agree that we're gonna spend $25,000. Well, I voted against this in the, in the Subcommittee, but that we spent $25,000 and basically come up with the same solutions. We paid Dick Kingston an awful lot of money and he's an extremely intelligent guy to, to, to help us with this matter. You know, the rates, and we, we did say specifically, when, when the rates went up a year ago, one of the talking points was that the rates had went up the prior year so everybody could serve. Because of that conserving, even though it's a 36-month cycle, the bills went up because we weren't using enough water, we weren't paying enough bills to, to make the, the payment. So I'm very concerned about this also. I had requested in the Subcommittee that we put this off. The other thing I, the other concern I had was where the money was coming from. If it's a water and sewer study, it should come from the water and sewer fund. And I would also like to wait until the books are closed for 2019 and see what type of surplus we have from those increased rates because there was bonding that, that was anticipated that hadn't been, that still hasn't been done yet. So I do have concerns, as Council Boncory does, and, but the, I might as well speak it now. From the committee itself, the committee did vote two to one favorable for this.
Okay, anybody else wish to be heard? Hearing none, we'll close out this portion of the hearing. Committee reports, Finance will put that off until, under old business, okay Jim?
Okay.
And we'll go to Millerfield.
So Millerfield met August 12th. It was a relatively brief meeting. It was over the summer, just trying to get a timeline of next steps and how we're gonna get there. Since then, we've had some progress that has been made. The doors are in, so the building is secured. The trim and the siding began actually this afternoon. By the end of this week, the side of the fieldhouse facing the football field should be completely done. So that's about a two or three week process, maybe a little shorter, but the side that abuts the football field will be completed by the end of this week. There was a meeting today with representatives from the VOKE and it was determined that we actually increased the scope of their work a little bit. They will be doing the HVAC, they will be doing the wall boarding and they will be doing the finishes that they had been intended to do. We, we were having trouble getting an HVAC contractor and they were approached, they were, we approached the VOKE and the VOKE was wholeheartedly endorsed the project. The system that we're putting in there is something that they've done in the past and are very comfortable with. And the way the timing is, we're gonna have the foam insulation will be done, then the wall board will be hung. The committee still feels that it's, you know, the way the football schedule is, I think it's very front-end loaded with home games and then I think there's a, a big break before Thanksgiving hits. before Thanksgiving hits. And the plan still is that, that, I mean, the plan was for Labor Day, but the plan is now that it will be ready to open on Thanksgiving. But there are a lot of little, small items that keep coming up, and we're also working on a fence between Millerfield and the Little League Field, but we also want to clean out that section that was discussed, well, not that section, but just in general with the weeding. We don't want to make a three-foot patch that's closed on both sides that we're just going to be able to grow weeds and not be able to take care of them. So there are little loose-end things that are done. As far as the field itself, it's been, all the punctual items have been done, and we're very comfortable with that. Still on budget, and the other item that we've had that's been a lingering sore has been a gas line that had to be moved from one side of the concession stand to the other side. But with the problems with National Grid, I've been north and over the past year and a half, all their resources have been put up there. We were putting a pipeline that they said could be anywhere from twelve to eighteen months. Luckily, we got some correspondence the other day, and looks like we'll be, that, that issue should be resolved relatively quickly. So overall, the progress is going well, slower than I would want, slower than I'm sure everybody would want, but we should be up and running by Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Any questions from the Councillors? Hearing none. Appointments, Commissions, and Committees?
Sorry, guys, got to listen to me again, but Appointments, Commissions, and Committees met on August twenty-eighth here in the Harvey Room. Present with myself, fellow committee members, Councillors Boncorry and DiMarco, also present with Council President Vecchio, Consulor Farino, Town Manager Faizan, Assistant Town Manager Rodriguez, School Committee Chair Capobianco, who was there in, in his member of the Airport Hazards Committee. Other members of the Airport Hazards Committee that were there were Gina Cassetta, Dick Bangs, Don Quirk, Tino, Capobianco, and Laura Cogle. The first agenda item was the, was brought up by Consul LaConti's suggestion. It was discussion of basically expanding the powers and duties of the advisory boards. Mr. Bangs gave us a very informative narrative about the Airport Hazers Committee since its founding back in nineteen seventy-one. Their commission is, has done incredible job over the past fifty, almost fifty years, which is just crazy, and still have two original members there. Their committee is looking to be able to go directly to Massport for information, basically as their desire to become a policymaking committee instead of an advisory committee. After much discussion, as well as President Vecchio informing the committee that he's going to try to attend as many meetings as he can as possible and work with the town manager to help keep the committee better informed. Our committee, Subcommittee, informed them that we feel any changes in the roles to their advi, to any of the advisory committees would have to come through a charter change. When the charter was written, we had put in requirements that every five years the council would form a committee and do a charter review. That next review is set to begin next year, 2020. You know, that, that committee will involve several members, putting, getting input from citizens and alike, until they eventually come to the council with recommendations, which would then be voted on by the citizens. And we had asked the Airport Hazers Committee to urge them to come to these review committees and, and really push for their request. The second item on the agenda was the town manager evaluation. This is the fifteenth town manager review we have done. The procedure that we have, that we are currently using now is exactly the same as we've done in the past, however, we put in a new evaluation document to score the town manager. Over the past few years, there have been some Councillors that thought the old evaluation tool was not specific enough and maybe too vague, and a few Councillors had, were tasked with the opportunity or the responsibility to write a new evaluation tool. That tool was not fully adopted by the full council, but after some debate, was adopted by the Subcommittee with a few changes. We thought there were a couple of specific questions that were too specific and thought could be unfairly scored, so we eliminated them. After discussion, we set out the new tool with a ten-day window to return with scores. After day six, with no comments, we had received some comments from the council president that thought the tool, you know, where it was never shown to the town manager, and the town manager was never officially giving a set of rules, that the evaluation could be tainted. As, as of the deadline, which was, I believe, August twenty-eighth, we received seven completed evaluations. One member felt that after only one meeting, it would not be proper to give an evaluation, and we also had one Consular who did not submit a review. At the meeting, I was prepared with three complete packets containing all seven evaluations, a cumulative evaluation along with a scoring sheet comprised of all the scoring and final grading. There were comments made from the committee, also the town manager, the council president, Consulor Farino, as well as all the other committee members. Our committee repeated that over the past fourteen years, this has been a relatively seamless process and wanted to go forward with the finished product. After much more discussion, we agreed to eliminate one of the fifty-nine questions from the evaluation. Another issue with the evaluation that we had never dealt with over the past fourteen years is there was a financial incentive for the town manager's contract, which is dependent upon the review. However, the wording of the contract is extremely vague, is it states words like satisfactory or successful without any clear definition. Our committee felt it would be under our discretion to come up with a matrix of what that, what would trigger the bonus and what would constitute successful or satisfactory, but I think the town manager felt that his contract was with, his contract was with the council president, and therefore it should be up to the council president to come up with the criteria. So after other discussion, the committee is going to redo the scoring with the elimination of one question, post another meeting prior to our next council meeting, and report back to the full council with our final evaluation scoring and summation. All evaluations along with scoring document will be available on the website after presentation to the full council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments from the council? Hearing none. Precinct Five Neighborhood Meeting.
Sure. I held a Precinct Five Neighborhood Meeting last Wednesday. We had about thirty members of the community attend. The, the meeting was technically just to go over CBD boundaries, because that's something that the council is going to be taking up in the next month or two, along with the planning board. So we had lots of questions regarding the rezoning process. We're really just trying to get a system, you know, a zoning boundary in place that's workable with more certainty than the previous one had. So people had a lot of questions about the rezoning process, and, and we talked a lot about the importance of not only having the boundaries be set out more clear, but also to make it more understandable about what is allowable in the zone, so that developers aren't, you know, questioning what this is, and all, and the community members aren't also having questions about it, too. This led to a conversation about the middle school site and how we should treat that throughout this process. We talked about the infrastructure project and what, better ways for the town to communicate with the neighborhood about road closures and construction, et cetera. We talked about the I Love Winthrop event, which is going to take place in a couple weeks, and potential strategies to approach a townwide master plan as well. So it was a great meeting, and I appreciate everyone for attending and providing me with feedback that'll help us all make a better plan moving forward.
Thank you, Council. Any questions from the council members? Hearing none. Town Manager required.
Sure. So there's, I have two items on this. They actually deal with items later on the agenda concerning the yard waste collection and the bike lanes, so we can save that for later. You know, I've taken the evaluations to heart, and I feel like there are certain things in there that I just want to try to clarify for. One being, you know, I understand that there was a request concerning a planner, and there was discussions about that amongst the council prior to my working here. There had been some conversations about it when I was looking for an assistant town manager, but I brought in Dave Rodriguez, who had a legal background, who's been performing commendably concerning our planning board to date. That said, Julia Wallers, who actually left, she put me in touch with Tufts, the grad school concerning planning, and we are submitting an application to have grad students actually come here and determine the feasibility of us adding a planning department, what the salary should be, what we should actually be looking for this department to be do, doing, what type of responsibilities we would put on them. That's not to say I have the money to pay for that planner or a planning department, but we are going to dig into this more, because a discussion of sixty thousand dollars for one position isn't necessarily enough, in my estimation. So we are digging into this more. In addition, later on this meeting, we are going to talk about Granicus in terms of agenda software. And in addition to that, there's a communication platform that they have, and it's been very clear to me that the communications of myself and the council out to the community have been suboptimal in my time here so far, and I would like to get that working a little bit better. So Granicus provides us with an agenda management tool that we would be discussing later. There's also a communication platform that I would like to pursue. When we talk about things like the Transportation Advisory Committee doing a poll of the community, there's a tool that many municipalities use called Flash Vote that actually gives us scientific feedback. It speaks to what Consul LaTiri was talking about, about adding potential questions to a ballot. Instead of putting them on the ballot, we actually can survey the community scientifically and kind of do feedback based off of demographics and things like that, rather than just put it on the ballot and spend more money on our elections. And then there's another tool that's out there called Zen City, where we can actually, one thing we're missing is that we have conversations here, and there are conversations happening online and things like that that aren't crossing paths. And we are not necessarily being attentive to all the conversations that are happening in town. So Zen City is a tool that uses artificial intelligence to actually assess all the conversations that are happening in town. So after this meeting, I could go into it, and I could say, oh, let me see what's happening online concerning the Veterans Road discussion. And everyone, positive and negative, it would give me scores, and we'd actually be adding levels of transparency into what people are actually talking about after the fact. So Consul LaConti, you have talked about how data is so important to you, and this is something that would be a tool, so we'd be able to better understand what the community is talking about in terms of communication. So I have gone over all of the evaluations, and I'm trying to be as attentive as possible to these items that I think we're all trying to work on and do better on. So it is nothing that, none of the things on the evaluations were things that I'm not working on. It's just things that I want to make sure that everyone on this side of the table knows that I am being attentive to as well. So the two other items that we have, they're the yard waste and bike lane, I will defer to later on in the meeting. But lastly, the I Heart Winthrop is the September twenty-first, and that is the only other item that I had on mine, so thank you.
Can I ask you a question regarding the playground?
Sure.
Okay. Now, I understand the school department already has, they put out a bid?
They have a bid submitted that has an amount of money, but they have a cost out, essentially, of whatever costs.
So if, if they're ready to actually do this job, and we don't have this money because it's technically coming out of the foundation?
Yep.
Could we not proceed with it and then take the money when it, when it comes and restock the account, so to, so to speak?
You could, but I would potentially caution against that. This is similar to what we're talking about in terms of the yard waste haulout as well. We can allocate money for that. That said, these were, and I agree that there is safety concerns in both instances. The yard waste haulout is something that is full right now, that the playground, not to say that the safety is not an issue, these were both items that were budgeted for an entire fiscal year, not just by the end of calendar nineteen or the end of this summer. So I do not necessarily want to ask for patience, but this is stuff that we talked about in terms of the entire fiscal year and not just as soon as we possibly can get them done. So unfortunately, the funding isn't secured at this time for any of those items. If you would like to pursue moving money out of stabilization funds or things like that, that could be up to you all to vote on. And then we would still submit the same grant applications for that money and look to resupply those funds over time. But it is, that is a discretion that you all have. You all could vote to move money, to take care of things that you deem emergencies. That said, we do have other items out there that are continuing to hang, that are big-ticket money items, that if they come to some sort of resolution, we are going to need to have some amount of money.
So, so the school department is not ready to award the contract?
They can't award the contract until the fund, the money is available for it.
Okay. Any questions of the town manager from the council? Yes, Council?
The, I was out canvassing the other day, and the MVP grant for Morton Street, it's from May of two thousand and eighteen.
So that's environmental bond bill money? That's not an MVP?
Yeah, okay. Well, I mean, I, I went online, I saw it somewhere. That's where it was. But, so the, the citizens down there are concerned that they've kind of been left hanging, and they haven't really had any kind of update of any real, you know, significant progress in their situation down there. We had two real bad storms, that it was flooded, six, seven feet high, and so they bent my ear for a while, rightfully so, and that's what I'm there for, and I just wanted to bring to your attention to see if there's any kind of progress on that.
So we have solicited funding from the Department, EUOA, at the state level. This is money that my CFO could actually speak better to, of the actual release of the environmental bond bill money. This isn't money that the state has on hand right this second. It is something that we need to basically get, we need to request the money from them. We have, we're at thirty percent design for the Ingleside Park, so we have requested money for that. Morton Street, we're also early in the process, and we're trying to fund the engineering first to then request that same money. But it is something that, it was part of the budget discussion. We are having these discussions constantly. That said, it's not something that the state just has on hand to give to us. We need to.
Well, there was a lengthy proposal, or whatever it was, application that was filed back in, I started online, I've been in the town website. So I was just wondering, you know, they had letters of recommendation from the Senator.
Absolutely. And that's, and so that's the environmental bond bill, and it's just, no one in the state has gotten any money from the environmental bond bill yet.
The state legislature overauthorizes bonded projects that are actually, will actually be supported by the administration. So the governor, the governor's executive branch has full authority for what is actually included in the governor's capital plan every year, and that's based on information about what the state can afford through that affordability analysis. However, the state legislature actually overauthorizes the amount of projects in that, and then it's sort of a, an effort to get those prioritized with the administration of what will actually be supported there. And so it is sort of just a lot of projects trying to fit through a small headline there. And, and as far as where we're, the funding that has been set aside for, for those projects have not yet been included in the governor's capital plan. FY twenty, FY twenty-one will be released usually around May or June, so that's a way to stay.
Yep, and we are frequently reaching out about releasing this money. We would, I would much prefer if we could have some of the engineering work done with the funding from the state, instead of us footing the bill for it to show additional proof of concept to them, to get them to release the money. But we are, it's a series of letters, having some of our other elected representatives from here advocate on our behalf to their offices to release some of the money, but we are working constantly on those things. I just saw the Secretary of VEA last Wednesday and asked her about it as well.
One other thing?
Sure.
And I don't know if this is the right part to ask, but the crosswalk, there's no crosswalk on Shirley Street and Revia Street, where the show is stationed. There's one on either side, but there's not one there where the, the new restaurant is there. It's about a year old now, but could you look into maybe, I know there's a stop line there, right? And people brought it to my attention while I was out and about.
Shirley and where?
Shirley and Revia Street, the intersection.
Okay. Any other questions for the council?
Thank you.
Rob?
Austin, I, you know, growing up, we used to play in an area called The Pit before your time, but it was death trap, you know, as far as a playground was concerned. But, you know, I have, I have been to a lot of these meetings before I was on the council, and I've, I've listened to Dawn speak a lot, and my kid goes to the upcoming school and has for over a year. It sounds to me like what you're saying is, you know, and I respect the process and the foundation and everything, but it seems to me like if we wanted to approve getting this playground done and put the finances towards it on an emergency basis, we could do that. Is that accurate?
You could.
You could. So I, you know, I, I, I want to throw this out there, because, you know, at this point, my kid goes to that school, and I think you said it was two thousand and sixteen. How long is enough? I mean, we're talking three years now. I mean, we're talking three years now. You know, let's get this done.
Before the weather sets in.
Exactly. Let's get this done. What's more important than our kids?
Okay. Then I would suggest that the councilor get a motion for the next meeting because it would require a public hearing.
Yep. Understood. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Council?
Just a couple of things. You mentioned the IHOT Winthrop event, which was a tremendous event last year, and I did get... Obviously, I'm in the center, I got some feedback from some businesses that felt that they, you know, weren't properly notified and Saturday. First of all, a point of clarification, it doesn't affect me, my street's open, whatever, but there were a lot of other businesses that felt that they weren't noticed properly at all, and, you know, was concerned with the timing being Saturday was either busy day by far in the center, that closing streets at 12 o'clock affects banks. Well, banks are usually closed by 12, it affects all the hairdressers, it affects the fiscal therapy place. It affects a number of places. I don't understand why a Sunday or a different day or more communication was involved. I think it's a great event. I went to it last year, I'll go to it this year, but I just wish there was some more clarification, and I know a lot of businesses wish that also. On the coming school, two things. First, just to go along with Rob just said, whenever this gets fixed, if it's tomorrow, if it's three months from now, if it... It's been stated continuously for three years, and there's documentation that it's not made up document, you know, it's a level one hazard. Is there at some point do we say, "If we can't fix it, we should close it"? Because I just don't understand how, if it is a level one hazard, which it is... To me, you know, and I know when you came here, one of the things you said was you wanted to limit our potential suits, lawsuits, whatever, our exposure out there. If we have been talking for something for three years, and if it is a hazard level one, God forbid something happens there. If we don't have the... If we have the money, maybe we could just do it now. If we don't have the money, it shouldn't be used if it's such a hazard. That's all my concern. I want to go on record saying, I think if it is a hazard, and if we don't have the money to fix it, I can understand not having the money to fix it, but then it shouldn't be used. So that was...
I think there's one element missing from this discussion, and that's the school department.
I'm just stating my opinion, saying that if it's a swing, it's not a swing, it's the surface itself. I could totally understand that, obviously, the schools don't have $150,000 and just say, "We'll do it." It's got to come through the council and through the town. But until such time, if it is deemed such a hazard, it shouldn't be used, because God forbid something happens, we're all going to look like...
True.
You know? So that was my only concern thought with that.
Negligence.
And also on the coming school, I was in there for their opening day, which is tremendous, and the building looked fantastic. It was freezing cold. It was literally... It had to be under 50 degrees, and there are some... I went into another floor and it was 75 or 80 degrees. Can we just look into... I mean, first of all, the cost of the air conditioning, and second of all, just the... We've had issues with the Ford Bank School. We were on our third boiler after 20 years of service and $107,000 in cost of the town. I don't think at all this is a negligence issue, I just think it's a mechanical issue, and I think it's gone on for a while. Can we just look into it?
Steve, is that something we could look into?
This is the AC coming.
Coming. Just that the temperature... The system's obviously working fantastic, it was 50 something, 58, but there are other rooms where it's 80. And so I just... I mean, I'm obviously a novice, but I think it's... I just wish we would take a look.
I was on the way, I had no idea.
Yeah, that's all. And I don't think it's a major thing, but I just...
So one thing of note as well, I appreciate the conversation during my town manager report. That said, I want to make sure that we are operating within all the meeting law. So responding to public comment isn't necessarily the best use of the town manager's report time, because the community isn't allowed to engage in this. So this is kind of like, I personally, this is the third meeting in a row where we've kind of had a back and forth during the town manager's report, and this does not allow the community to engage in the process, and it doesn't allow everyone to be prepared for it. So I think it's very important that although someone brings something up in public comment, as Council President said, let's add it to the next meeting, let's actually have some information available for the community, so if there's people who would like to comment in on it from the community, we can engage everyone in the process. This kind of back and forth during the town manager's report isn't necessarily the most effective way for you all to govern the town. So I just want to make sure to caution... I'm just trying to give updates on a couple of things and then allow us to move on, because if there's little issues, bring them to me beforehand, we can get them on the agenda, or maybe I can answer them without getting on the agenda. But responding to public comment isn't the best thing for you all to do either during your meetings. So just wanted to caution. Thank you.
As, you know, that part belongs to the school department, but we can make a motion as an emergency motion today to request them to vote if you want to make that motion on the new business.
Well, first of all, my comments, I try to keep my comments to anything you... You mentioned the coming school playground, and you mentioned IHOT Winthrop, and those are my two points. If I had a list, which I don't have a list of what you're speaking about, I don't know if everybody else does here, I don't get a list ahead of time of what you're speaking about. But to me, this is time where we could ask you questions about the town, but my questions were focused on what you mentioned in your report. I didn't ask you something out of the realm of your report.
My report, I had just mentioned...
You mentioned the coming school, you mentioned the playground, and you mentioned IHOT Winthrop. So I asked two questions surrounding those two subjects.
Councilor DeMarco brought up the coming school.
He did, but you mentioned it in your report.
I mentioned the planning and the communication.
Okay, that's fine. Let's move on. Counselor, Moncorra, do you want to make your point? Did you just make your point? That's it? Anyone else? Anyone else wish to be heard?
Okay. Old Business. Now, Counselor Moncorra, you can have the floor as Chairman of Rules and Ordinance to discuss the status of the marijuana ballot question.
All right. About a year ago, Rules and Ordinances met a couple of times, and we put together a ballot question, and that ballot question, there was some debate about it and so on and so forth. We sent it to Copeland and Page and asked Copeland and Page to do the ballot question. So finally, this weekend, we got an answer from Copeland and Page, and they did a ballot question, and everybody should have gotten it, but I am going to read what Copeland and Page is saying that we should put on the ballot. And that is ballot question about the adult use of recreational marijuana establishment prohibition. The question is, shall the town of Winthrop adopt the following zoning bylaw? Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 3, allows a town through adoption of a bylaw to prohibit all or certain types of adult use recreational marijuana establishments from operating in that town. In a town such as Winthrop, that voted yes on question four at the November 8, 2016 election, in favor of the legalization, regulation, and taxation of marijuana, a ballot question is also required to implement such a prohibition. The zoning bylaw amended set forth below, if adopted by the town council, would prohibit marijuana establishments, as that term is defined in General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1, and 935 CMR 500. A yes vote on this ballot question would be in favor of adopting the below zoning bylaw to prohibit all types of adult use of marijuana establishment in the town. A no vote would be opposed to adopting the prohibitory zoning bylaw. All right. Here's the zoning bylaw amendment. It would be Section 17.53 of the Winthrop Zoning Court Enforcement. All marijuana licenses are to be prohibited in the town of Winthrop. Consistent with General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 3A2, all types of adult use recreational marijuana establishments as defined in General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1, and 935 CMR 500, including marijuana cultivators, craft marijuana cooperatives, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, independent testing laboratories, marijuana research facilities, marijuana transponders, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related businesses shall be prohibited from the town of Winthrop. Has everyone seen that? And I think we are sort of a deadline to pass the wording of this ballot question. I know that the election nomination papers have to be in by September 19 to get on the ballot. I don't know if we have until the 23rd to pass this. We do?
We haven't... No, we have until the 23rd to submit it.
Okay.
So we should, if we could, if everyone has an agreement.
Can we vote on this today without a report out of your committee?
Yeah, because it's already really come out of committee.
This has already come out of your committee as written?
No. It has not come out as written.
That's my question. I know it came out of this committee.
Our committee was working on it for a year, and what, Friday we got this, or today?
Okay.
All right.
So what is the procedure?
The procedure is that if you want to adopt the language that Copeland and Page said is the right language, which is our legal counsel, I would say that we need to adopt this.
Want to make a motion?
I'm going to do the new... Oh, put on the old business. And make a motion that we adopt the language that Copeland and Page has presented to us for the marijuana ballot question.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second's been made. Discussion on the motion. No discussion?
Well, I just, I think I'm glad it's coming to an end in that we have to move on and let the citizens decide what they want to do, if they want to open these shops or not and/or not open them, as it may be. But, you know, we're in a different time and a different place, and I thought I'd see the day, but it's here and we need to vote on it, and I just wanted to make that comment. And if you have to second it, I'll second it.
It's already been seconded.
It's already been seconded.
Okay. Anyone else wish to be heard? The council? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The ayes have it.
You don't need a roll call to put that on the ballot?
Next item is Counselor LaTiri. Maybe you can update us, or any... Anything new on the parks and rec relocation? I don't know if you were prepared to discuss it.
I was not prepared to discuss that. No, there was nothing new, it was a no. We will have something for the next meeting.
Okay. Very good. All in the... Old Business, refer to Counselor LaTiri.
Okay. Out of Finance. First motion is that I move that the town council vote to transfer $25,000 from the town council reserve for the cost of service study, public process on towns, water and sewer rates, or take any other action relative there, too. That came out of committee with a two to one positive recommendation.
Okay. It's out of committee with a positive recommendation, no second necessary. Any discussion on the motion?
Can you just read that again?
This is to move $25,000 from the town council reserve to fund the study for the water rate and sewer rates.
Counselor? Sure. So I know we talked a little bit about this during the public hearing that we had earlier, but I voted for this in committee, and I intend on voting for it tonight as well in front of the full council. And I think that it's important to note that this is really not something that we have studied previously, and it's not something that's really new either. I can remember when I was running for, you know, it's not something that just happened because we had this rise in water rates. Something that I heard from a lot of my constituents while, you know, when I was campaigning, and something that I certainly heard a lot more about after these rates were raised in the wintertime. And we did do the audit and everything, but I think that we need to take that as informative moving forward about how we're going to adjust our rates, because we can talk about different strategies that other cities have implemented, like Revere and everywhere else, but as we're frequently reminded by members of this community, Winthrop is unique and the cookie cutter solutions don't frequently work here. And if we don't do any type of study and just were to implement something, we wouldn't have all the information we would need in order to implement something like this. So I hope that this is the first step in the process of creating a more equitable solution to our water rates, and I think that we can do that, but we need the information as a council to make that decision, and the community needs that information in order to advise us about what they would like to see in their water rates as well. So I hope we pass this, because I think it's a really important thing to many of our constituents and for us as a town.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Counselor?
I just wanted to say that during our finance committee, we discussed if Austin had exhausted other avenues where he could have possibly gotten free information from another town, how they did it, and he assured me that he exhausted different avenues, that he did in fact attempt to reach out to other communities to see how they did it, and he thought this was the best way to go, and I think we need to give him the due deference to make sure we're getting fair rates and the people in the community are getting charged appropriately, and if there's a... So they can be comfortable and won't question if in fact they are being overcharged. So I think this would... It's not an audit, I understand that, but it's, you know, rate cost study. So you're studying the cost of what's assessed on people, and I think that is a good way to go.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor LaTiri?
As I stated earlier, I think I agree with Counselor Christopher that it's not a new issue. I think it's been an issue. I think it always arises around water rates. I think people in the community would be happy if their water rates were lower. I'm not saying that's possible, but I'm saying to redistribute the wealth, to have a family with six kids that are doing a ton of laundry end up paying more than somebody else because they have more usage. We're a community that has, I think, on a commercial rate, less than a 6% commercial, which is why it's been unfeasible to do anything with rates in the past. There have been studies done, I believe, in the past, as Director Calla mentioned earlier. This is going to spend $25,000, and I think the company's going to feel like they're going to have to come up with something to save for their $25,000. Not going to say everything's fine, but this is not going to lower the rates, this is just going to redistribute, potentially redistribute how the money comes in. I think there are a lot better things we could do with $25,000 than that, and I do think if we were to ever do this, the money should not come out from the town council reserve, it should come from the water and sewer enterprise fund. So I will be voting no, as I did in the committee.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Just to reiterate that I'm against spending these $25,000 for a study that is not a study for the council, it's a study for the town manager, because the town manager sets the rates. The council has no say in what the rates are. So I think the town manager has the ability to set the rate without this study, because I don't think he wants to go to a tiered section, because nothing else in this town is tiered, everything is equally dispersed between everybody that uses water, for the water, and I can't see wasting $25,000.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Counselor Calla? I just want to make it clear, it's safe to say that after spending the $25,000, there's... It clearly does not mean that the rates will change at all. People may not save any money. It just might be just a distribution type of situation. So spending the money is not going to save anybody any money.
Anyone else wish to be heard? I just have to put my two cents in. I think it's really not a question of whether or not the average citizen's going to save any money. I think the residents that were outraged by the amount they're paying on the water bill questions whether or not, you know, we're doing it the right way. And I don't... This report, if nothing else, will have an opportunity to, at least the public will feel that we took a look at how we're approaching the water rates in Winthrop. And we don't know what the result is going to be. We don't know what they're going to come back with the recommendations. That's why we're doing this. So I think if for nothing else, it's part of being a little transparent, and when you have citizens demanding, "Why are we paying the rates we're paying?", I think we have an obligation to address the issue. That's why I'm voting for it.
And the funding's coming from council reserves?
It is in this motion. Anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Raymond? Counselor Calla? Can you pass me and think about it a little bit? Can you pass me and think about it a little bit more? Councilor Christopher?
Yes.
Councilor Boncorry?
No.
Councilor DiMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Farino?
Yes.
Councilor LaConti?
No.
As President Terry?
No.
President Vecchio?
Yes.
No. I'll say. Tight.
All right. The next motion. So it did not pass? Did it not pass?
It did.
Did not pass.
It did not pass.
Next motion coming out of finances and moved that the town council vote to transfer $15,000 from town council reserve in order to fund the restructuring of the Harvey hearing room and take any other action relative thereto. This was also, I'm sorry if I'm not speaking loudly. This was, this also came out of committee. This was unanimous approval for this to come out to committee. This was something that's been, you know, put off for years and years and years and it's just too, not to modernize for any reason, but just to, out of safety and out of concern for all participants here, we thought we would, basically this is to buy new tables similar to what is at the town manager's table. Little easier to get in and out of. Everybody would be able to face and view both entrances and exits. It's a crazy world out there right now and we just thought that this would be a better setup. It would be a more comfortable setup. And it did come out of committee, but it came out of committee by cutting the price in half from 15,7500. We did do research on it and got a quote, a little under $6,000, I believe is the quote. Again, it's not oak and wood and grain and everything else. It's basically tables similar to where the town managers seated. They would just come here in a U shape so the town manager would be able to sit with us and look out to the audience, be more vocal. His voice would spread through the room much better and much clearer and I'm sure everybody would be more happy to hear that. So we would, so the motion did pass unanimously for unanimous consent to basically update the room a little bit.
Are you amending it from 15,000?
We amended, the amendment is, after it came out of committee, is that the town council vote to transfer 7,500 from the town council reserve in order to fund the restructuring of the, excuse me, from the Harvey room or take any other action relative thereto.
Any further discussion, questions from the councils?
It just adds to the one state. It's going to make it a little bit easier when you have community meetings as well. These tables are very difficult to move around and they're not always the best, this isn't the best shape to do everything except the council meeting, so it would really, I think, benefit the community in that way.
And that's where you too, you're not looking at the back of the town manager. He'll be facing you so that you could clearly communicate that way. But he won't be looking at his back.
President Vecchio, I just want to be clear, are we voting on 7,500 or 15,000?
Yes, 7,500.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
No.
The ayes have it.
The next motion is that the town council vote to transfer $10,000 from the town council reserve in order to fund software agreement with Granis' software for the town council, excuse me again, town council meetings, town council, town committee meetings and public communication or take any other action relative thereto. This came out of committee with a two to one positive recommendation.
Anybody wish to be heard?
I would like the town manager to just explain it a little bit.
Sure. So this part of Granis' is an agenda and meeting minute management software for point of clarification. Denise, how many pages of handwritten notes are you at right now for this meeting?
Twelve.
All right. So 12 pages of handwritten notes have been taken just for this meeting. What I would like to do is alleviate that from Denise's life. This is a web-based platform that the feed from the cameras right there would go onto a computer. She could timestamp every single time one of the councilors spoke about something as well as any community member who speaks about something. The agenda would feed into it. Every single time she takes a vote, she would click vote and all of the councilors' names would come up and she'd just be able to click yea or nay on it. They claim that 90% of meeting minutes can be done within the time that the meeting is actually held. So it frees up Denise to actually be able to do other very important work that are her responsibility. In addition, we have issues across the town concerning open meeting law, promptliness of minutes and posting of agendas. And this is not something that solves all of those problems, but it puts up the guardrails to help alleviate those problems. It's something that Denise and I have spoken with the company about. I don't want to speak for you Denise, but I felt like we were both excited about it. And it's something that, again, with the levels of transparency that I am seeking for this community, it's not something that we can necessarily do in-house and we need a tool to best do that. So this would be a good tool, I believe, to utilize.
President Vecchio? Yes. Do you have, have you gotten price quotes on these softwares and seen how much they cost? Do they cost under the $10,000 that we're looking at right now?
Yeah, so this has an implementation fee and then it also has the first year of the contract fee that would fit within the $10,000.
Okay. Anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Yep, you've got the surplus.
I move that the town council declare as surplus all personal property remaining in the Winter Middle School and authorize the treasurer-collector to post for sales items detailed in Amendment A. I further move that the town council authorize the town manager to dispose of all other items which have been determined by the procurement officer as to having no market value or resale value or take any other relative action thereto. This came out of committee with a unanimous positive recommendation. Amendment A is talking about just details, the items, some of the items that are deemed valuable or have some sort of value in the middle school. Anything from refrigerators to...
Mixing machines.
Yeah, mixing machines and such. There is a lot of items that probably have no resale value, which the town manager would then be able to dispose of, I assume. And it is, we asked the question if any of, any public buildings, employees, not employees, personal employees, but any public buildings that needed any equipment that was in there are more than, have had discussions with the town manager concerning that. So this is just finally beginning the process to empty that building out.
Any questions? You go seconds necessary?
No. No seconds necessary.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Town council, town manager determine the feasibility of painted lanes on Veterans Road.
Sure. I would like to ask Director Calla to come up here to help me out on this one. He produced, like we said, 30,000-foot view report on this. And I understand all of the letters that came in or all of the correspondence to the council regarding this topic. Again, it's very high level and I would like to have Steve kind of discuss his findings.
Absolutely. Should I just read the memorandum? Is it easier to start that? I can, you can hit on the findings. Okay, well, I looked into Councilor LaConti's request for feasibility of bike lane. Back on August 13th, when, when Councilor made the request, limited specifics were given. You were looking for a feasibility of a bike lane. We didn't really discuss width, direction. For the purposes of my study, I, I took four, measured at four stations along Veterans Road. Veterans Road, as we know, Route 145 is a heavily traveled two-way connector that serves as a designated bus route and truck route. Parking exists on the westerly side, which is the golf course side between Locust to Shirley as well as Shirley Street down to Washington Ave. The roadway, the corridor that we spoke of was, was the corridor between Shirley and Washington Ave? Correct, right?
Veterans Road.
Well, Veterans Road extends past Shirley Street.
Sure.
Okay. The lane width between Shirley Street and Washington Ave are inconsistent and vary between 13 feet to 15.5 feet. So for the purpose of the study, as I said, four stations were measured on Veterans Road along the Shirley Street to Washington Ave corridor. The following measurements incorporate the available lane width remaining from the parking allowance along the westerly side, which is the golf course side of Veterans Road. To do this, I measured 10 feet off the existing guardrail. Reason I went 10 feet is I, I measured, the day that I was out there measuring at the four stations, I measured 25 cars along the corridor that were parked. And on average, from the, from the guardrail out to the edge of the car, averaged 10 feet. Those cars don't, typically don't park right up against the guardrail. So that's, the four stations that were, that were used were at the Temple, Tiphareth Israel, stationed at Levy Branson Way, Cutler Street and the backside of Closing Counters. The order of the following measurements at each station represents the available travel lane width on the southbound side under current conditions and the available lane width on the northbound side for minimum width designated bike lane of four feet is introduced in the northerly direction. Now, what I want to reiterate is the Mass Highway standards recommend a six-foot bike lane. Six-foot bike lane would not give you your minimum lane widths on the roadway. So I brought it down to a four-foot bike lane, which is the minimum requirements. What was found was that Station 1, on the northerly direction, had 11-foot travel lane. On the southerly direction, 11-foot available travel lane. Station 2 gave you on the, on the southern lane, which is from Shirley Street down to Washington, nine and a half foot lane width. Northerly side, again, accommodated the 11-foot lane width after the four-foot bike lane was introduced. Station 3 gave you an eight-foot bike lane on the southerly direction and an 11-foot lane on the northerly direction. Station 5 gave you a 15-foot bike lane on the, on the northerly direction and 11-foot bike lane on the southerly direction. So it seems as though on the northerly direction, you can accommodate a four-foot bike lane, but there's two, at least two, again, I only measured at four stations, there's two pinch points which consistently force vehicles over the center line of the road coming in the southbound lane. Again, this, this roadway, as we know, is a, is a designated bus route and truck route. So the minimum lane width has to be 11 feet, you know, on this roadway to accommodate the heavy flow of traffic in that size vehicle. So my conclusion is as follows. Under the current conditions, the measurements conclude that the pavement width on the Veterans Road between Washington Ave and Shirley Street does not consistently accommodate the recommended lane width for the use of this roadway. The minimum lane width on this roadway is recommended at 11 feet to accommodate the heavy traffic count on this connector road as well as the width required to accommodate buses and large trucks that are required to travel on this designated route. The inadequate lane width that currently exists at Stations 2 and 3 on the southbound side creates dangerous pinch points that result in vehicles consistently crossing the center line of the roadway and could cause a vehicle heading north to have to veer into the proposed bike lane to avoid collision with a vehicle heading south that crosses the double lines at these areas. Although the lane width on the northbound side appears to just meet the minimum lane width of 11 feet when a minimum allowable four-foot designated bike lane is introduced, I have a major concern that a bicyclist may feel a false sense of security in this painted area and be surprised or injured when two passing vehicles and the bicyclists do not fit at these pinch points. Please note that the proposed bike lane width is only able to be four feet. Again, Mass Highway standards recommend a six-foot bike lane, which is the minimum allowance, four feet, and offers very little room for the bicyclist to avoid collision if the designated lane is breached by a vehicle. Furthermore, and again, these are my recommendations, I was asked to do this through DPW, no engineering, outside engineering was, was brought in for the purpose of this study. Furthermore, if the recommended minimum lane width of 11 feet are ignored by the council and this designated bike lane is voted on to be created on the northbound side of Veterans Road between Washington Ave and Shirley Street, or even if sharrows are chosen to be used instead, it is my opinion that the town would be promoting bicycle travel toward additional unsafe areas. For example, once you reach Shirley Street, there are no ideal safe alternatives to extend this proposed bike route. If you turn left onto Shirley Street, you end up in a narrow two-way road where vehicles are constantly breaching that center line due to the parking allowance on that stretch of roadway. Turning right onto Shirley Street is your safest option, but it ultimately turns you back in the same direction that you just came from. If you head straight, you quickly end up at a fork where a decision would need to be made at a busy intersection to turn either left onto Crest Avenue or right onto Winter Shore Drive. Both of these options direct the bicyclist onto roadways that can also not support designated bike lanes. And if sharrows were used onto roadways with narrow, heavily traveled lanes with tight parking and the potential to encounter large vehicles on the bus and truck route. My recommendations. I feel that our existing off-street trail system through Lewis Lake is the best alternative to promote safe bicycle travel in this area and provides much better alternatives to extend the route beyond this area of Veterans Road. Although an investment is required to fully enhance this trailway, it is my opinion that the reduction in the potential for injury far outweighs the associated cost required to create a suitable bike trail to link the existing trailheads. I did a quick analysis of River Road to Cross Street Route versus Veterans Road. The use of the walk width of trail system from Washington Ave trailhead to the Willow Extension Trailhead and then onto River Road to Cross Street is a much safer option to achieve this direction of travel than creating the northbound bike lane on Veterans Road, which is a heavily traveled truck route and bus route with areas that don't meet minimum lane widths, creating pinch points, pinch points that result in vehicles consistently crossing that center line of the road. The council could further enhance this proposed route by eliminating parking on the even side of River Road between Willow and Buchanan and going further to turn Cross Street into a one-way in the northerly direction, allowing for designated bike lanes on each shoulder or a two-way bike lane on one side. Bear in mind that if you put Cross Street in the northbound direction, Bowden Street could still serve as, as your southbound lane of travel. Cross Street would connect, would direct the bicyclist to the new high school, middle school on Main Street and position the bicyclist in close proximity to the new Belle Isle Marsh Trail System and the boardwalk at the end of Winter Street that would offer safer travel options for the bicyclist. At this point, the route could safely be extended to either town line by using Morton Street toward the Belle Isle Bridge or by using the boardwalk and trail system to travel safely toward the Revere Line near Short Beach. Those are my recommendations. It's, it's an investment, but I think that it's a safer option to utilize the trail that we've already established, the trailheads. We do have construction costs of that trail system. And I just, I want to caution the council not to, I understand Veterans Road looked like the widest road in town and, but I don't want to just paint a bike lane just to say, look, we painted a bike lane on a street in Winter. I want to kind of, and there's been, there's been studies and they've put together the routes, but I want to, I want to be safe and smart about it. We can still get the same direction of travel and link those two areas in a much safer way, in my opinion. Again, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I was asked to do the study utilizing the off-street trail system through River Road and making some adjustments along Lewis Lake, rather, making some adjustments potentially to parking on River Road. And you may not even have to. You could probably do sharrows there and it's, it's a lot less traveled roadway. I feel that, you know, you could get away with that. And then you could do designated bike lanes on Cross Street if you wanted to make some changes to the direction, you know, changing from a one-way to a two-way. Those are my recommendations. I, again, I don't, I think there's a false sense of security on Veterans Road by painting a bike lane, especially a four-foot bike lane, because that's all you can accommodate to get those minimum lane widths, which, you know, 11 feet is required on Veterans Road, you know, as a minimum for the type of roadway that we're utilizing there.
Thanks, Steve.
Yes, you can go first.
Well, first of all, gentlemen, I'm wondering why didn't the council receive a copy of this report prior to it being read to us at this moment? It would have been quite helpful to have a written copy in front of us to study.
I apologize for that. I just received this this morning and it's something that I just communicated with Denise that in the future it will go out with the packet. I apologize for that. I apologize for that.
Okay. Secondly, is why has a four-foot bike lane been sort of looked at here? When I drive into Winterbourn on Saratoga Street, that bike lane couldn't be more than two feet wide. That's what I envisioned for Veterans Road, and I'm wondering, why wasn't that considered here?
There's not a two-foot bike lane coming in.
How many feet is it?
That's probably a five-foot.
Five feet from one?
Curb to paint.
Well, that includes parking, though, right? There's parking, and then there's a bike lane, and then there's traffic, right? We understand that?
On what section of roadway are you talking?
On Saratoga Street coming into Winterbourn?
I think you're talking about, yeah, Orient Heights.
On Orient Heights, coming into Winterbourn, there's a bike lane right there?
It's not a two-foot bike lane.
I see. And how big is the bike?
I wasn't measuring over there. I was asked to study Veterans Road.
Got it. How many parking spots would need to be eliminated if we were to put a bike lane there?
Where?
On Veterans Road.
I didn't eliminate any parking.
No parking is needed to be eliminated on Veterans Road for this? And what would be the cost to do this?
I didn't study the cost.
So it would be minimal, then? It would essentially be paint and maybe a DPW worker kind of readjusting their route?
No, but, so, in terms of paint, it's not just paint that goes, it's not paint you buy at the store. It's a thermoplasty surface that costs $8 per square foot. So if you have a four-foot wide lane, you're looking at $24 per foot of bike lane. So you do the math from there, however long the distance you want.
The cost is deep, the exorbitant part of it. I personally won't paint that bike lane unless I get a letter from the council saying that this is something you want. It is, my opinion, is not something that Steve Cal is going to go out and paint a line there and tell somebody, "Safely ride your bike in a designated bike lane on Veterans Road."
I would also like to expand on that, that, again, high-level analysis was done here, not a deep dive. So if we want to do a deep dive and talk about eliminating parking or dig into this stuff more, we need to allocate some funding for it and potentially bring in an outside traffic engineering firm to look at these things. This is, I cautioned this last month in the meeting, that, again, it's going to be Steve's opinion, Steve's interpretation, Steve's some very good analysis here to give us some high-level answers about the questions asked, not necessarily saying one way or the other on it, but just trying to inform the process.
I'm sorry.
I'm all set.
Counsel.
So, I drive from Winterbourn to Salem every day, and I go by numerous bike paths, and they're all different sizes, different, you know, different markings or whatever. And I know in some of them, they did a six-foot bike lane, that they had a telephone pole in the middle, and it was an issue. But I was, I'm imagining that when you say a six-foot lane. That's probably.
I'm saying you can't, you can't fit a six-foot lane on Veterans Road.
But I think that's what we discussed prior with the motion. It was a six-foot lane. So I've seen the four-foot lane, I've seen the ones on Bennetton Street that just the diamond, it's a marking.
And that's the charros. You can do the charros, but it's not a designated lane.
I think that's a reasonable compromise.
The feasibility study was for a designated lane, that's why I'm speaking.
Right. And I think that could be a compromise, and I think that's what you are talking to, just a marked lane and so that people are aware that there may be a bicyclist coming by there. And, you know, it could be three-foot. You know, you could make that.
For the charros, you wouldn't, so you wouldn't have a designated lane with the charros.
Right.
You would just have them. But why Veterans Road? Why not have you road in town?
I think River Road would be a great compromise, not even a compromise. I think that's the better suggestion. It's less traveled, there's, you know, it's a better surface for the most part, and, you know, it wouldn't be that much out of your way. It'd be maybe another 50 yards that, you know, that it would meet at the end. So, I mean, it's not really, you know, on Shirley Street. So, I mean, I think that would be a safer route for bicyclists, and I think it would be a better option, especially, like I said, that's an MWRA designated truck route. There's chemical trucks, government, a truck driver tries to swerve because, you know, a bicyclist or even a pedestrian, you know, you're going to have a problem. So I'd like to caution to the best of our ability and utilize a less traveled road, especially with commercial vehicles.
Counselor DeMarco.
First off, thank you for taking the time to do this. I know you have enough to do as it is, so. Just two questions, basically. It seems like you just focused on Winterbourn, you didn't, like, for example, Orient Heights going out of Winterbourn. You didn't take a look at that? You don't know the exact dimension.
My direction was check for the feasibility of a bike lane on Veterans Road.
Sure.
That was the direction I got.
And just to be clear, and Julia Waller said this earlier, that it did not eliminate, when you looked at adding the bike lane, it did not take away any parking spots. Is that accurate?
I didn't take away any parking spots. Again, it was, and for the purpose of the study, I was focusing on Veterans Road in the northerly direction to keep the bike lane away from the podcast. You also have a section on the westerly side of Veterans Road that has head-on parking down between Dawes Park and Ocean Auto. So having somebody back into a bike lane seemed like even.
Yeah, no, I get it.
A more dangerous situation.
Okay.
Focused on the northbound side, focused on the lane width that's existing.
Okay.
And to maintain 11 feet of vehicular travel lane, you could only do, if you were going to do it even, you know, consider a designated bike lane, you could only do four feet. Six feet was going to give you a nine-foot lane, which is inadequate for buses and large vehicles.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else here? Yes.
I just want to say, I think you did a really great job. You put together a comprehensive report, and I think you gave everybody an alternative to still go where you want to go and still enjoy bike riding, but, you know, in a safer direction. So, appreciate that. Thank you.
I agree with your mother, and you're not my son, and I think you did a good job.
Thank you.
And I think it's a safety issue. Your opinion, it's not safe. It's hard to think upon it there. Use of a road and no trily.
Let me reiterate, I'm not a traffic engineer. This was the study that I did and the measurements that I got. You want to bring in, you know, somebody that's going to look at this a lot closer? You know, I, you know, feel free to do that. I'm just saying that I wouldn't tomorrow go back to my department and have anybody paint the line there and say, "You're safe driving in this lane." I won't do that. You guys want to put it in writing and direct me to do that with the town manager? That's going to be a decision on the council.
So Stephen, you're really actually answering both of these motions, correct? Because the second part was the Lewis Lake Bridge making a pathway going.
Yeah, I feel that that's your best alternative. There's a cost there.
You're using the Greenway.
We already have the trailheads established.
Yep.
I'm using the trailway starting at Washington Ave and spilling out at Willow Extension.
So, one thing of note, too. Steve and I have had multiple conversations, not just about Veterans Road, but about bike safety across the town. It's very apparent to me, based off the activity of Bike Winterbourn and the Traffic Advisory Committee, that there's a desire to pursue a mode shift around town, to present alternatives. That's why we have LineBike, that's why we're looking to get money from the Safe for Different Things. We're talking about how to make our roads safer constantly. We're talking about what type of striping should we be doing? Should we be exploring charros? Are there any feasible locations for bike lanes? So this is not something that is just in this study. We are consistently looking around and communicating with the state about one-time funding to help kind of build out a network. And if the funding becomes available, I will be more than happy to talk with the Transportation Advisory Committee and yourselves about where we think that money should be best allocated in town within certain parameters. So this is, I mean, Steve did a great job with this, in my opinion, but this is not the first conversation that we've had about bikes. We talk about it too much, in all honesty, but we talk about it about every other week, about where we think things can work. And, again, safety is of the utmost importance. That's the name of the game in this. So, thank you very much, Stephen.
Counsel LeConte, what are you going to do?
Counsel President, I request we put off voting on this until we have a full council at our next meeting. Maybe button up the language of exactly what is on the table. Which to me sounds like a single potential lane or diamond or whatever going along the northerly side of Veterans Road that wouldn't eliminate parking.
Okay. All right. So we're going to table this until the next meeting?
Just a point of clarification, is there, has there been a motion concerning the installation?
There's been feasibility.
So feasibility.
I think you may want to make a motion, introduce a motion for the meeting, not just about the feasibility, but the actual implementation and funding.
Yes, I'll be submitting a motion to Council President for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Under New Business, Town Council Review Ordinance 12-28-020, Use of Launch Ram. I'll entertain a motion to refer to rules and ordinance.
Motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? The ayes have it. Town Council to transfer 175,000 from General Stabilization Fund for Special Article General Fund Yard Waste Hollow. This should go to finance. However, I don't know if you want to consider this as an emergency situation.
Why is it 175?
It's 140.
Should be 150.
Should be 140.
Sorry, you two put this together.
So, the motion is for 175,000 because initially, when the $150,000 cost was put forward, that was a couple of years ago, and my understanding is that since the, I seem like I can elaborate on this, since the microburst that occurred a couple of weeks ago, I think has increased through the demand and the need to, and probably in the volume of the yard waste, and so this is to make sure we capture all of that.
So, again, this is, I stated this last time, back in 2016, there was a vote taken by council to do two consecutive hollow phases. For each consecutive year, it was going to be $150,000 a piece. And then we were going to fund that facility $40,000 a year to maintain it and hollow it at the end of every season. So the first $150,000 was done. We removed approximately 8,000 to 9,000 cubic yards of material. Then four seasons passed without doing anything. You know, we never funded that consecutive year, and we never funded $40,000 a year. So essentially, today, we're right back to where we were at that before we even started hauling out in the first phase, but as Anna spoke to, we got the microburst, we got a pile of brush and debris, we got inundated with wood chips from chipping branches and tree removals. We have about another $20,000 to $25,000 of additional just to get that pile of debris out of there before you start hauling out the old yard waste accumulated debris.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to refer to finance.
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I ask a question? Could we have discussion on that, just so I could ask Steve? Assuming there was a motion passed whenever, tonight, tomorrow night, say if there was a motion passed tonight for 170, when would that facility be able to be open?
We would start hauling immediately. We already put the project out to pay.
I guess my question is, the anticipation is, hopefully sometime we're going to get money from the Winter Foundation. If it costs 150 or now 175, whatever it costs, there's got to be a cost that if this council would pass as an emergency motion at some point to get enough out of there to get us through the season, what does that cost? I mean, I know 175 is to get you where you want to be, and with the Winter Foundation and the capital plan, that's hopefully where you're going to be, but at some point, you're going to start.
$25,000 is going to get you right back.
Right to where we were.
We opened the season this year to capacity. We're already at capacity. We opened it on the basis that we were getting this money and we were going to start hauling out. School wasn't in session, we bid the project, we were going to have trucks coming in and running. Now, I don't know how that works.
I guess my point is, originally, when you had made your motion in '16, it was supposed to be 150, 150, then it was going to be 40, 40?
40 a year thereafter.
So, in other words, I would assume by that that 150, 150 was going to get us to square one, and then 40,000 a year was about what we were going to take in every year so we could get rid of it.
That's accurate.
My question would be, if we just need 25 to get back to the full, wouldn't another 40, just by math, get us enough that we could get it full again, but get us through the season? If it was going to cost 40,000 a year, 65 to me should be able to get us open, get you through the season, get us until the Winter Foundation money comes in.
You've got a company that you bid a project to, you've got a company that you're awarded to.
No, I'm just asking.
No, no, I'm trying to explain to you. You're not going to get a company to come in and say, "Okay, we'll only take out 40,000." They're not mobilizing.
But isn't that what they're going to be doing every year thereafter?
That's a different bid every year thereafter. We bid the project for the project, 150,000 to remove 10,000 cubic yard.
I'm just trying to get it open, that's all.
I understand.
I'm just trying to do the easiest thought process.
What I'm saying, I don't think you can get a company to come in right now and just hollow.
Well, if this is being referred to finance anyway, can we just look at that possibility just to see?
Absolutely.
Before the finance.
Well, if the appetite here is to try to put this through an emergency motion, I'll rescind my motion.
I just have a question in parliamentary that dropped. Last meeting, I made a motion to have $150,000 put in the budget, and I think Linda amended it to 175. Counsel Ingraham exercised her counsel privilege to postpone it for this meeting. So I believe that the motion is still on the table to vote on the 175.
Well, Counsel Ingraham used her counsel privilege after I amended the motion to include the playground.
Okay. So that's still on the question?
Right. But it's not on the agenda.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Counsel Mark.
I wasn't here at the last meeting. I was in Texas.
Well, the fact that it's not on the agenda right now, that's the point.
The point is, it's not.
All right, my last move was to make a motion to refer to finance. It was seconded. I think we voted on it, did we not?
We did. We had discussion.
We did. Any discussion on my motion, which was seconded, to refer to finance? Is there any none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Town Council to transfer 61,000 from the Cemetery Sale of Lots Fund, Special Article General Fund for Cemetery Building Demolition. Motion to refer to finance?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Can I say something?
Sure.
It looks great that the building is gone, and it's been talking about getting rid of that for years, but I was also talking for years about putting a mausoleum there where the building is. Is there any possibility to get a feasibility study, what it would cost to put a mausoleum there, and how much money that would bring us back? Because it would give us a lot more burial spots to, we could sell. Okay, before we do anything else with it.
Want to make a motion?
I just want to make one comment on that. And that was part of the historic district, and he did make a good presentation to us about the public safety, although we like to preserve our historic inventory in the community, but the commission voted, in fact, that it basically was a safety hazard and it needed to come down. So he did do his due diligence to consult the Historic Commission, and they agreed.
Okay. Town Council to declare a vehicle surplus, council on aging. Motion to refer to capital assets?
Motion to refer.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Public comment?
Yes, Karen.
I guess, Counsel Boncor, I'm more confused now than I was before. I have no idea if I'm supposed to vote yes or no on that motion that you're making for the.
If you vote yes, it will ban it. It will not be a marijuana place.
Well, why can't you just say that?
That's what it does have. But they're using co-hypothetical language instead of.
Well, maybe then, when the town clerk puts out her flyer for voting, maybe that could be added to her flyer. You know, to vote yes, it means that.
Actually, it says it. It says it.
I listened to the second part of it, and I'm saying, I don't know which way to go now.
Well, he did the summation first, then he read the question.
I don't know.
He did the summation.
But you've got to go on that way with the summation, with the question.
And the other thing was, when Counsel Terry was referring to doing the evaluation for And the other thing was when Counsel Terry was referring to doing the evaluation for the town manager, I guess the town manager said that his contract was with the council president. I don't believe that that's true. The council president signs, signs the contract as a representative of the town. Yes, the council president brings the names of the town manager to the town council, but the town council has to get five votes. So the town manager, granted, he answers to the council president, he also answers to the rest of the council. And I don't believe saying, yeah, his contract is with the council president is correct.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, Karen.
Where does the MWR mitigation money go? Which fund? The general fund? And we also have a stabilization fund.
It goes to the general fund, which is all part of the whole big pie to make the budget. And then the stabilization fund is funded by free cash that will be certified in November, October, November. The council has a policy that X percentage will go to stabilization, X percentage goes to capital stabilization, X percentage goes to
Billy maintenance.
Do we have a number exactly how much the town has? I know we don't have any free cash. Do we have a number exactly how much is in the town's, say, stabilization fund or general fund? Because I know, one, you're allowed to kind of make motions to move for emergencies, and one, you're not allowed to touch. I remember we went through something a couple of years ago, we were talking about free cash. So what is the town's exact financial status money-wise? How much does the town have in the bank right now?
CFO, please.
So our three reserve funds that Counsel Terry just referenced, the general stabilization fund, as of today, has $1.88 million in it, so $1,823. The capital stabilization fund current balance is $1,309,471. And the building stabilization balance is $240,000. Thank you.
So just to say, that obviously is a good chunk of money, but it's very important when you go to bond and everything else, because the state would like you to have 10% in reserve, which would be roughly 6 million, and we're at roughly 3.4 or 3.5. But it is a good chunk of money.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes.
I just wanted to comment about the bike lane on Veterans Road. I bike all the time. I don't know how many other people here do bike all the time in town. And Veterans Road is probably the road that fewest people would ever want to bike on. It doesn't go anywhere. I bike through Lewis Lake Park all the time. Steve's on something there. That's a good shortcut, and it takes you somewhere. The reason you bike, I want the exercise, good for my knees, keeps my belly a little bit smaller. It's healthy. I also bike to go to Shirley Hardware to get things around town, because it's a quick way to do an errand. You want to increase bike safety, lower the speed limit, or enforce traffic. On the way to points, I often bike to Deer Island and back. That's definitely a pinch point there, you know, around Shirley Street. The other thing, on Shirley Street, there's a series of manhole covers, and they're slotted. Well, if they were rotated 90 degrees, you could get a bike over them. The way that they are now, they're slotted in the same direction as the traffic. If a car forces you onto them, your wheel's going to go right in there, and you're done. There are small things around town, but I think that a bike path on Veterans Road is really not a useful place to put it. It's kind of like in an island where somebody's just going to go back and forth on Veterans Road. I think will almost never be used.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Dottie?
Yes. May I ask through the chair, has the town manager decided when the Fall Forum is going to be presented so that the community at large can participate?
Denise?
I did email you back.
No, I'm talking about the Fall Forum for everybody. Yes, so that they can hear it.
Right, I emailed you back. Right now, it's tentative for November 19.
November 19 is the Fall Forum?
Yes.
T tentative for it. Okay. My second question is, is there a liability factor involved if our paved cow paths and honey oda roads, and if you put a bike, indicate that it's for biking, and a vehicle were to swing out, say, to make room for a bus, and something else goes, and there's an accident, where is the liability factor here?
The driver.
If we doesn't, so it's always going to be
A bike has the same right of way as a car.
As a pedestrian?
No, as a car can occupy the lane.
Well, my feeling is, when we're doing this painting and identifying, are we making sure that we're not putting any areas where the buses are, or places, or trucks, that is going to create a possible hazard, accident, and a liability to the town, if indeed there is one? Because I personally, I grew up in Dorchester, and we biked everywhere. And we didn't need any markings. We needed the helmet, and we just needed to make sure we knew where we were going, and we were facing the oncoming traffic, so the traffic could see us coming down. All right? It was no big deal to make lanes, and I appreciate the millennials and the vision of what they're going to be, a magnet community, and bringing all these people, they're going to come, they're going to shop, they're going, they're going to do marvelous, wonderful things. Okay? I admire that. In the meantime, I would like to know what kind of legalities are around those lines when we designate something?
We'll get an answer by you, Dottie.
Not for me. I'm not going to be sued, honey.
Well, you want the question, if you want the question answered, we'll get it by you.
Thank you.
Okay? Anyone else wish to be heard?
And as far as the Copeland and Page statement goes, Mr. Van Corre, you used every bit of sidelined legal ammunition that you could to refer to 2016, to go on and on, and Copeland and Page, and we had the Attorney General's office send you a memo back in early fall, telling you that we did not have to reiterate the voting habit of the initial vote in the state, because it was a statewide vote. This is a town community vote. This community vote says to you people, okay, when all is said and done, and the small amount of monies that you're going to yield in the way of a 3% net profit, you're going to put in a retail marijuana store and have all kinds of traffic coming in and out, is it worth it? When all around you, in the bigger cities, they've already established both medical and recreational facilities, and it's very easy to go online and order your cannabis and order your I went to the Washington, okay, I'm not going to read it now. I went to the policy meeting hearing in the Capitol, okay? The House of Representatives, the Subcommittee on Crime, Terrorism, Homeland Security, and the head of the hearings, all right? There is a tremendous amount of a national, okay? And this young man that ran this was the former Obama administrator. And this young man that ran this, okay, "We need to, quote unquote, before we learn more about marijuana's effects, we need to slow the train down." Of course, if you're in the pot business, your job is to do just the opposite. And why, in God's name, you people believe that you're going to make this vast amount of money? What fund would that go into? We have two choices. Okay? You made a mistake, Phil, and it doesn't represent the community at large. Hopefully, hopefully, the people will step forward.
Worthy present. Just so it's clear to the entire population of Winthrop, I did not write this. This is not what I wrote. I had no input on this. This came from Copeland and Page. Our attorney said this is what the question they sent
Yeah, and you did not need to use. They gave you the same information that you lost July. The same information, and they explained why you didn't need to reference all of the chapter and verse in 2016. Legally, you know that as an attorney.
The attorney general changed that.
Well, my understanding is that the Attorney General changed that.
No, she, July, that opened up the community. I have the information at home for you, if you need it.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard?
Since it's the whole town, which is
I'm sorry.
I'm going to put it on. Yeah, I'm going to put it on my page.
I just want to send out two thanks. You took care of the, next to the tennis courts down the high school. I had some complaints about that, and I did a great job of walking by there. And also, down on South Winthrop Street, down the end, you took care of those people down there and fixed their sidewalks. I just want to thank you guys for addressing that.
Appreciate it. Yes.
I'd like to just say, it's Barbara Semilis from Precinct One. We had relatives in town over the weekend from Bolton, and they thought it was the most beautiful community. Everybody seemed to be taking care of their property, and I think it's just great to see. I do have a little bit of concern about the bicycle path, what number river road is it going to be?
That was just, no, no. That was just something to consider if you wanted to have designated lanes, those charros. I said, it could be enhanced if we did several things. I'm not saying it's going to happen, that's entirely up to the town manager.
And as a resident, I'm a little concerned about the safety at the park also. I'm not aware, but I'll go down and take a look. We also have 11 grandchildren here from 8 to 18, and so they are going to different schools, so if you could really take a look at that. And as a public service announcement, I'd like to say thank you to all of you. And I look at all the Italian names here, and on January 31 of 2020, supposedly, my mom's family was the first Italian family here. And so I thank you for the work that you've done. You know, I have an Irish surname, married to a Lithuanian. None of those things really matter, but I do want to say that the kickoff of Italian Heritage Month will be September 28 at Spinelli's in Lingfield. So thank you all, and thanks for all the work that you do. So thank you, and
Thank you, Barbara.
Thanks for everything. We need to get along as neighbors. We need to take care of one another, and the community looks great. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Just one thing. Just because you talked about the community and how nice it looks, and Betty Peabody was here earlier, I, too, right around town. And I think if whoever owns a home, and they're mowing their lawn, it would be great if they could go along the sidewalk, you know, near the gutter, you know, where the sidewalk meets, and pull that little weed whacket. You know, if everybody did that to get rid of that growth.
Yeah, we have to pay
You see a beautiful lawn, and then you see all the stuff coming out of the sidewalk. And the town can't do that. But if every person just took care of their own little space, you know, it would really
Really old it is.
Would help. It would help so much.
Just one quick thing. Denise, can you post a meeting for whatever night our next council meeting is, at 6:00 for a finance committee meeting? And also, I think Counsel Frino would like to post for capital assets?
I think we were working on a date to meet with the
I should be up for that tomorrow.
You can put this one on, too.
Put the vote together?
We'll do, yeah.
Any other comments from the council?
When is your finance meeting? It'll be 9/17.
Can we put a motion on, by the half, using capital assets, stabilization funds?
Could you do that?
Yeah, we put a motion off for the next meeting.
Oh, for the playground?
For the playground, yeah. Why don't we do that? Because that could be an emergency situation.
Some of the, one of the councils wants you to take it upon yourself to do it. We're going, just make sure it gets done.
I'll do it.